Good evening. Welcome to the December 16, 2015 Board of Education meeting. We've been in an executive session since 6:00 PM discussing the personnel action. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'd like to thank the Hammagill School and its administrators and faculty for hosting us this evening. Two years ago, the Board of Education had, one of its goals was to go around to the district and host a meeting in each of the buildings throughout the year. And so we're continuing that tradition this year. And I'd like to thank Dave Kazanzic for hosting us this evening. And also, I noticed that he had the students in the building sign a note back here so afterwards if the board members could look at that. It's very nice. I liked one of the notes said, "I am not bored of education." So.
(laughter)
And they spelt it properly. So, no, very nice. Also, if you're a participation in government student, any PIG students here tonight? Okay, great. Your requirement is to stay till 9:00 o'clock. If the meeting is still going on at 9:00, we'll have you come up. There'll be sign-out sheets up here for you to sign out. You need to sign out to get credit. And if you have any forms or papers that need to be signed by a board member, will be available to do that. If the meeting ends before 9:00, then just come up at that time and do the sign-out. Introductions?
Michael Cooper.
Diane Stever.
Lynn Lenhart.
Dave Hurst.
Jody Monroe.
Matt Downey.
Charmaine Biedesinger.
Christine Beck.
Joanne Cunningham.
And Judy Tejo.
First agenda item is the approval of the minutes of the December 2nd, 2015 regular board meeting.
Sub move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Do we have a representative from the Student Senate this evening with us? Great. Please come up to the microphone.
Hi, my name is Ellie Bell. I'm here on behalf of Student Senate. This upcoming winter, we have a lot of activities planned. First off, we're finishing up our holiday food drive. We're gonna collect the boxes tomorrow after school, sort them Friday, and hopefully distribute them Saturday. After that, we're working on meeting up with the American Cancer Association to try to plan a Relay for Life Walk, which is like a walk-a-thon, hopefully at our own high school track. It raises money for cancer research and also pays tribute to people we've lost to cancer. Also, we have our annual snowball dance, which should be coming up mid-February. I believe we've locked in a date. And we're also finalizing getting furniture in the gym be foyer to try to, we have some old furniture that we put in to see how that will work, and it seems to be the pretty positive thing in the foyer, so we're gonna try to look for new furniture to put into play.
Okay, great. Any questions for?
I was wondering if we might have, I don't know if you want new, new furniture, but I also wonder if there's anything, I don't know if we have anything in the storage that might, they might look at. I don't know.
We pulled them out. We have some rickety benches.
(laughter) No, I was just saying the district.
No, that's what I got.
Yeah, from class of like 1985.
Got it.
It's retro.
Yeah, it's old school.
It's in, it's in again.
And the food drive, do you coordinate that with the local food pantry or the Kappa District food pantry?
Well, Senate isn't exactly in charge of it. Mr. Landry's running it this year, and we decided to help out because we have a lot of student support. We had a lot of people who could hand out boxes and pick them up and explain. But we're not exactly in charge of it, so I couldn't tell you exactly. But I believe, it is local. It's going to the area.
Yeah, it's local, and I think it's local, like, school district.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Oh, okay. Jody's gonna talk about it.
There was an SN, I still get the high school SNs that talk about where to pick up boxes if you ordered one, and even if you needed one and weren't able to order, you might be able to still get something.
Great, great. And the Relay for Life, I know I've experienced that in another community where I have family, and it's a great event.
Yeah.
They do that in the springtime where I've experienced it, and it's well-participated by the community there.
Yeah, we're meeting with the chapter representative for our area, I believe, January 4th, to discuss further details and logistics.
Great. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Joanne? Yes?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask Ellie, I know you're an alum of Hammagill. How does it feel to come back as a senior and be up at the podium at a Board of Education meeting as a, do you remember being back here? Does it seem like it was that long ago?
No, and everything seems a lot smaller than it was when I was here the first time.
(laughter)
All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. How many of the PIG students are alum of Hammagill? Any? Couple of you? Great. Well, welcome back. Next, we'll have the interim superintendents report. Jody?
Thanks, Mr. Downey. So Ellie mentioned, and I'll talk a little bit about the holiday drive. This week, the district's wrapping up its Holiday Caring and Sharing Drive, which you've seen the SNs about. It's actually a joint effort between the district, local sponsors, and the Bethlehem Festival funds. So we'll be distributing our gift packages, which include holiday foods, a turkey, and gift cards to about 75 families this weekend. Each school's been collecting foods for the past couple of weeks. Individuals and companies actually purchased the gift cards that we put in, the baskets, and the festival fund purchases the turkeys from Hannaford in order to make that event happen. And I'd certainly like to thank all of the students, faculty, staff, and administrators, and community members who've helped to, every year, make this possible. Also, last weekend and this coming weekend, Theater Without a Net is performing Macbeth. If you haven't seen it yet, you have another opportunity. The performance was success, with a here minor shoulder injury on opening night, but the show went on, as I'm told, so. And that's it. We're just wrapping up some of the events before the holiday. There's lots going on, so that's my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Jody? Thank you. Next, Board of Education report. Who'd like to start?
I didn't go to the play this weekend, so I can't speak to it.
I want to appreciate the parents, obviously the actors and the teachers who made the event possible, but also the parents, because I know that, looking at the program, there were so many parent committees and parent commitments, so it was a great, really, community and school-based event. And I will echo something I am hearing impaired, and I went to the performance, and I know that Mr. Cooper raised, last time we were here, the need to mic actors. And, you know, we just, having experienced the play, I would just reinforce the need to do that, you know, it would be helpful. But it was, it was a lovely event. I love the sword, but a lot of sword fighting was great.
There was a lot of sword fighting. And luckily, they were able to sword fight. Joanne got to watch the dislocated shoulder from actually inside the auditorium. I got to hear about it outside the auditorium, but it went on.
It went on. It was, I have to give Mr. Yara lots of credit. He was cool, calm, collected. And also, we happened to have, there was a doctor in the audience who came up and helped. So, I mean, it was, I mean, first of all, you thought it was sort of part of the show. So, everybody, nobody left after it was announced that, you know, the star, Macbeth, you know, dislocated his shoulder, kinda stabbing the king, so it was kind of dramatic. But I have to say that, you know, he really kept his composure, and, you know, the doctor came up and everything worked out. You know, I was a little worried about potential HIPAA violations when you could actually see them, kinda put his shoulder back together, but, but it is terrific, and I hope folks make an effort to go, because it's really, this was my first time seeing one of the Shakespeare productions, and it's really, really amazing that you can take a group of high school students and pull off a show with that caliber of, just the whole production. Really, really impressive. Mr. Yara does a great job. Christine was head of ticket sales, so the parents do a great job, and it's a lot of work, so three more shows, though, so people should go.
Those kids work really hard, and it was nice to see them all pulled together. When Miles was injured on Friday night, they all were cheering him on and so proud that he could go on. It was just nice to see the bonding that happens among that group, so.
And also, I think the other students, we sometimes forget about other, maybe the students who aren't on the stage, but the tech crew, the lighting crew, quite an involved production.
They are there, they're every night, from 3:00 to 10:00, while they're rehearsing the week before. They put a lot of time and effort, the tech and the orchestra. And I did send a note to Jody about the mics, that she's gonna look into purchasing them, because we actually only have two at the high school, so she'll look into that.
Right, we're working on it.
Yep.
I did one other thing, though. It did make me realize, and I think Charmaine, you're the one who brought up at some point, kind of looking at the auditorium and the, you know, really the facilities. You know, they do look like they're, in some character, you know, a little shabby in places, and I think we definitely should pay some attention there. The other thing is, I also can't hear in one ear, so I am not significantly hearing impaired. But I sat in the front row, and I could hear, I could hear everything, but, you know, I know lots of people have more significant hearing loss, but it is that small-stage kind of feel, and if you're up close, you know, you can kind of make up for some of that.
We'll be seeing it Friday night, so I'll let you know how my wife Fares has been.
Great.
Listing system.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, Lynn.
A totally different note. The New York Northeast Regional Information Center from Bosse's had their Career Technology Awareness Day last Friday, and there were a lot of administrators and teachers there for the day's programs, and, which are, which are really excellent programs, and I assume the staff really got a lot out of that. But also, I just want to mention that the help desk was there giving a presentation too, in conjunction with the Gildan High School, who just started a help desk in their school. And so, they got ideas from each other, which was really nice, too. So, and they did a great job. I mean, these students really are so, they've learned, you know, the skills of speaking to each other and collaborating, and real customer focus. They know how to handle it, so that was great. And then, just, just a couple of other things, that the reconstituted, reauthorized 1965 Elementary and Secretary of Education Act was, was signed by the President last, the other day, last week, as every Students Succeeds Act of 2015 now. And although there is a lot to it, the main, I think the main things that I think we like is the fact that a lot of the control of education has been taken away from the federal government and to the state and local school boards. So, really happy about that. Of course, details, we'll have to see what the details pan out to be. And there was another good, oh, about the task force, the Common Core recommended that there be a moratorium on using test scores as part of teachers' evaluation, at least for four years. So, that was good news, too.
And also, the Board of Education, on last Thursday morning, we had met with Assemblywoman Fahey in the district office, and I think it was a very productive meeting. We have a very strong advocate for education in Assemblywoman Fahey. You know, she didn't make any promises about any restoration of funds, but, you know, the GEA, they're hopeful to at least get rid of that. If not, there'll be probably a significant reduction of that. And, you know, they're facing a lot of different issues in education, but she definitely will be there fighting for us in our needs in this upcoming budget and legislative session. So, anyone else want to add anything to that?
I have a question for Lynn or Ms. Monroe. On board, I was reading the article about how they may reduce some of the testing. Do you know any specifics on what testing they're looking to reduce? Yeah. This, this spring, they're not reducing any of the time or days involved. What they're doing is they're actually removing a couple items from the exam. So, for example, in the ELA exams, for most of the grade levels, they're removing one of the passages. So they're still allocating the same amount of time and days, because one of the concerns that's been prevalent in the last few years is students don't typically finish the exam because of the amount of reading involved and writing involved. So for the ELA exams, they took out one of those. The math, they took out a couple items, nothing.
On average, two questions per test.
Two questions per test. So, it won't be significant changes this year, because, quite honestly, the tests were pretty much developed. But the following years, where they have a new test developer through Questar, another company, and they'll be generate, the tests will actually be generated by teachers actually writing the questions, I think we'll see more significant changes then. And we're specifically talking about ELA and the math exams. Right. The other exams will stay. The math for and eight science and all the regions exams still stay. Yeah. Thank you. Yep.
Okay. Moving on, next is our presentation of this evening, and our presentation is on RTI, which is Response to Intervention. That presentation will be given by Dave Hurst, Dave Kay, Cindy McCollum, Kyle Meyer, and Laura Feinberg.
Again, welcome to Hammagill Elementary School. Tonight, we will be talking about Response to Intervention, RTI, which is the practice of providing high-quality instruction and intervention matched to student needs. Again, tonight presenting will be our Assistant Superintendent for Educational Programs, Dave Hurst. We also have Cindy McCallum, Laura Feinberg, Kyle Meyer, and Deb Wooster is also here tonight to provide support. So Deb, whenever you want to jump in, feel free.
Sorry, Deb, your name wasn't on the agenda. I would've said it.
No, no, it wasn't, it wasn't. I just have to embarrass her, that's all.
Me, too.
As a principal, I just wanted to thank you for putting this into the budget for this school year. It is, in a short time, for me, I've seen a lot of progress being made in a couple of areas. First is, we are able to hire Bethlehem teachers to fill some of the RTI positions. Those teachers, they already had an understanding of the curriculum, of our programs, the schools, the community, and also the expectations. So they were able to, again, come in and hit the ground running. Also, as far as scheduling, we're able to have people almost full-time in the elementary schools. So, it has helped us block scheduling, so we can pull kindergartners at a certain time, first graders at a different time, because before, we'd have to pull a child out for reading at 9:30, then math at 11:30. So they would be missing a lot of classroom instruction. So having the teachers here full-time, we've been able to tighten that up and make the scheduling a lot better than it ever has been. And finally, for me, the most important factor in student success is connections made. With the new RTI positions and the program, the connections have been made between teacher and student, as the teacher gets to see the student throughout the school day, not only in their small groups, but also out in the hallway, in the cafeteria, during their specials, when they're at a recess. So the student knows that the teacher is there for them. They'll check in, hey, how are you doing with this project? How's that book that you're reading? The other connection is teacher to teacher. The teachers are able to meet before school, after school, rather than being in one building one day, another building another day. They're able to be in there helping provide resource to our classroom teachers to help students succeed. And finally, the connection between the teacher and the parents. If we had a teacher here maybe one or two days a week, and that day happened to be a holiday, that parent may not be able to get ahold of that teacher for a couple weeks, and that's too long. Our teachers now are able to get back immediately. They can have personal meetings with parents, phone calls with parents. They're able to make that connection, and all those things put together, for me, has made a world of difference. So, on behalf of the principals, you know, I wanted to thank you for putting this in the budget, and I will turn the program over to Dave Hurst. So Dave?
Okay, thanks, Dave. So, the next few slides, I'm just going to go over sort of the highlights of what an RTI program looks like, just to give you a little bit more familiarity with it, and to sort of go over some of the regulations that the states put into place to ensure that our program meets those needs. So, the RTI program, Response to Intervention, is on a tiered system, and basically, the way it works is, you're in a particular tier depending upon the level of support that you need in either ELA or math. So, we have, Tier One are, we sometimes refer to this as where our students are being progress monitored. There are interventions that are given within the classroom itself by the classroom teacher. Students are pooled into smaller groups, and again, they receive differentiated instruction from their, you know, their regular classroom teacher. Students in our Tier Two level are pulled out for reading and math services, three times a week, 25 to 30 minutes, and the student-to-teacher ratio is four to one. And when we talk a little bit more, you know, Dave mentioned that, you know, the level of support having these RTI specialists has provided, in years past, we were not able to even come close to maintaining that four-to-one ratio. It was very common to see a seven, eight, even nine-to-one ratio, which, as you can imagine, we have some of our, you know, needier students now, you're trying to provide support eight, nine students at a time. It becomes very, very difficult. And then, the final tier is Tier One, or Tier Three, rather, which is still a pullout, except for now it's four times a week for about that same amount of time. But now you're down to a two-to-one ratio. This is something we've never been able to offer until this year. So you can imagine, I mean, our neediest students are in a two-to-one ratio, and in the past, if they were lucky, they were in a class with eight or nine-to-one. So this has been a huge benefit this year, being able to provide the service that these students desperately need in the appropriate ratio. So just to formalize a little bit more about some of the highlights that Dave mentioned, you know, the five additional intervention special positions that were added to the budget this year have allowed for our primary students to be scheduled early on in the fall. In years past, we sort of had to wait until sort of mid-year when we could gauge our numbers, you know. Is there enough room at certain schools where we can service K-1 students? Depending on the building size, that may or may not happen. So a lot of students in the K-1 level, you know, it was really sporadic in terms of whether or not they received the support. And as you can imagine, the longer you delay support that students need, the gap is just going to widen between them and where they should be. So I think, you know, Irene Fontas and Gay Sue Pennell say it pretty well, that the most effective intervention is implemented early in a child's school career, before the cycle of failure is established. The intervention specialists provide resources and activities for Tier One classroom interventions. In the past, again, our intervention specialists were traveling, we basically, you know, we had two teachers traveling amongst five buildings. There's no way they could also find time within their schedule to be working with teachers on a regular basis to make sure that they can help support them in providing interventions in the classroom itself. So although we did have sort of Tier One in the classroom, it was really incumbent upon the classroom teacher themselves to sort of figure out what types of interventions are needed, how to implement those interventions, and it's become, it's a very difficult task to manage. Again, Tier Two students are now scheduled at much, much more appropriate levels. We are now able to adhere to the four-to-one ratio. Tier Three students were never really scheduled in the past as Tier Three students. They were really lumped in with our Tier Two students. Again, eight, nine students with just one teacher. And having, you know, more people obviously allows much more time and flexibility. We now no longer have to figure in teacher travel time, so that allows us to schedule more students. They're able to get in and out of classrooms much more frequently. They're able to work with teachers with, throughout the day. They're able to see their students throughout the day doing things other than just pulling them out. It's enabled them to really get to know their students at a much deeper level, which obviously makes for a much more effective program. The other piece Dave mentioned was the RTI scheduling block. Just to give you an idea of what this looks like, this is just one of the buildings. It works no different, really, than phys ed, music, art, where we, you know, a group of students gets pulled out at a specific time each day, so that you know, you know, today, on a Monday, grade three is going to be pulled from 9:30 to 10:20. That's when they go for their intervention services. As opposed to in the past, we really had to just sort of piecemeal things, and what would happen is, you'd have a student that's receiving intervention services for ELA, and, you know, the reading teacher comes to pull them out of class, and they're pulling them out of their classroom ELA instruction. So now, it's not an additional support, it's support for something they need extra help with, and they're really just getting the same amount because you're pulling them out of that class. Or a student that's struggling in math, they're missing their regular math instruction to be pulled out for their intervention. So they're not getting the extra support, they're really just getting a little bit smaller level support, but not at the level of, you know, really seeing these students twice a day for these disciplines. So this has made, had a huge impact. We've really been able to minimize the pulling of students from core instruction. It's not a perfect system. Some students have multiple services, so obviously, they're not going to fit the block perfectly. But for the majority of our students, we're able to allow them to still get all of their core class instruction, and then receive this as an additional instruction, not as just a replacement here and there. So now, I'm going to turn the program over to our magnificent teachers, who will explain a little bit more about what exactly happens in both our ELA and our math intervention systems. So I believe I'm first going to turn it over for some ELA.
Hi, I'm Laura Feinberg. I teach reading at Hammagill. One of the resources we use at Hammagill, and all the elementary schools have access to, is called LLI. It stands for Level Literacy Intervention. Basically, the gurus of guided reading, Fontas and Pennell, came up with an intervention system for all the grades, kindergarten through, I think it even goes till sixth grade now, maybe even higher, where it comes with a very comprehensive kit for each grade level. So this is my second year using the first-grade system, and I love it. It's wonderful. It comes with tons of books. All the books are really high interest to the kids. They're series, they have series in them, so the kids get really excited about that when a new book comes out. The first-grade system obviously has a lot of foundational skills in it, a lot of phonemic awareness, a lot of phonics, stuff that maybe the kids missed or need a little bit extra instruction with, which is basically what I do. Kids need a little bit more in a certain area than others, so I beef that up and then try to move them on. I also was able to get the third-grade system this year, which is very different than the first-grade system, in that the books are a lot, lot more books, and obviously, the focus isn't on foundational, but it's more on wordwork, fluency, vocabulary, writing, comprehension. So, but like I said, very comprehensive. I brought a couple examples of books, but they also, in the third-grade system, have basically any genre you can think of. So there's a novel unit, there's information books, there's other nonfiction books just about animals, there's series, they have humorous books, graphic novels. Trying to think one more. Oh, they have these books called two-way books. So one side is a book, this is blizzards, this is a historical fiction story about a blizzard that happened in the 1940s, and then when you flip it over, there's another story, and this is a narrative nonfiction about the actual blizzard that happened in 1940. So it's like a nice little way to have kids really learn about a topic with multiple Can't say enough about it. I love it. I think it's tightened my instruction up a lot. I think I've become a stronger teacher using the program. They provide teachers with tons of support. In the lower-grade system, the books go home with the kids, so there's a huge parent component there, where they read with their kids at home, and then they come back and return the books, and the kids are very responsible and they do very well with it. And I just, I love the program. I think it's also helpful for teachers, too. They see the books that are going home, and they see where the kids are, and it's very, it's very much geared toward their instructional level. It's their zone of proximal development. It's not too hard, it's not too easy, it's right where they need to be. So, and this is only the second year, but I had a lot of success last year with my first graders, so.
We're a tag team.
So, hi, I'm Kyle Meyer, and the first thing I wanted to say was that I had Ellie Bell in third grade, and now I feel really old.
But anyway, we, I'm going to piggyback on what Laura just said.
Thanks, Dave. We have a new program. We are the Math Interventionists. Cindy and I have been doing this job for four years now, and we're both former classroom teachers. And this year, we were lucky enough to have a similar system to the LLI for math called Do the Math. And the woman who started the program with Scholastic is named Marilyn Burns, and you, if you're in education, you know Marilyn Burns. and you, if you're in education, you know Marilyn Burns, she's been around forever. When I first started teaching, I had her original book, and it was my bible, and it, I still refer to it quite a bit. She's just amazing, she was conceptual understanding before it was a big thing. It's all concrete, hands-on learning. These kits, there are 13 different modules, and it goes all the way from number cents up to fractions, and there are three levels within each unit, so, the last level of each unit is all problem-solving and applying what they've learned in the lower kits. It's, it comes in these great little containers, and there's always a literature component to it as well, which the kids love, making the connection between math and the language arts piece. So, the books are all, are here for us. The part that's really helpful to us as interventionists, sorry, I'm speaking for you. Is that there is a pre and a post-assessment, so we can screen students in the beginning to see where they will fall in terms of their skill level, and then, we go through the module lessons, and then, at the end, we're able to do a post-assessment, to see how much they've learned, and whether we need to go back and hit some different areas that they may still be lacking in. And it's all really foundational skills that they are lacking, and that they need a boost in. And, so, so far, we've just been learning this as we go this year as well, but we're really both enjoying it, and hearing from our colleagues in other buildings, very, very similar answers to that. So, I'll let Cindy speak a little bit more about the lessons themselves.
Well, first off, I just wanted to say, I think in terms of the impact of the new interventionists, I think Kyle and I are probably
Great.
Have had the biggest impact, because we were, just the two of us, traveling between the five buildings, and so, now, we've got a teacher in every building, and it is really made
And we're not eating, we're not eating in our car anymore.
We're not eating in our car anymore.
That's great.
Thank you for that. Yeah, so, and we never were able to see Tier Three kids, and now, we are, so that has been wonderful, so that's been great.
Absolutely.
I just wanted to show, in terms of, in addition to the nice, you know, oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
To the materials that they gave us, the teacher materials, there's also the, each child gets one of these workbooks, and they just love getting this workbook, I don't know, I, you know, it's a workbook, but they think it's the most amazing thing, it's, it's got a lot of color in it, and so, it's very fun for them. But, in addition to that, we have bags and bags of these manipulatives that they gave us, that go along with the kit. So, everything is hands-on, like Kyle said, it's very, very concrete. One of the activities that I've been playing with my first graders is called, sorry, I'm keep missing the, it's called Shake and Spill. It's partly because I'm short, and I feel like I can't see, it's called Shake and Spill, and it is the most easy game that the kids love. It's basically, they've got this little cup, and inside the cup, they have two-sided counters, and they shake and spill, literally, and they have, we started with five, and all the sums, and how they can make five, and now, we're up to six. Well, I can't even tell you how excited they were today when we were playing the game again, and at the end, so we finished playing, and they have, it's called Race to the Top, so how many, how many different ways you can get to six, we were doing today, and then, it's the first child that gets all their, you know, three plus three, or four plus two, whatever it is to get to six. And then, when they finished, and they, you know, they're so excited about that, then, I had them close up their workbooks, and then, on the easel, write all their facts to six, and both of those children had absolutely no problem, it was just, it was wonderful. So, it's so concrete for them, and it's, it's really, from what we've been seeing so far, it's working well, and we're excited about it, so, yeah.
So, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate the support.
Anyone have any question, any board members, or?
First, I have a question for Dave, and my question is, I wasn't clear when you were going through the slide about, I think it's like the second slide, are we, are we doing the intervention with kindergarteners, or that's just what the literature says is the best practice?
No, we are now, we are doing it with kindergarten and first graders, which, we've always tried to fit them in.
Right.
But typically, we weren't even able to attempt to fit them in until January-ish, when our numbers sort of stabilized, because really, for an effective intervention program, students, it's not, you're, once you're in, you're in, or once you're out, you're out, it's really meant to be a fluid process. And when you only have two people traveling amongst five buildings, it becomes, it becomes tricky to make it a fluid process, so it almost does become, once you're in, you're in, and once you're out, you're out, because it becomes so difficult just to manage the schedules.
Okay, good.
So, really, the amount of assessment that we're doing within the intervention classrooms, the teachers are also doing interventions, like Eames Web, FNP benchmarking, and through those, we're able to have data points on kids, where then, if we have a student that we feel is in need of intervention, we're able to put that through Child Study Team, we have data meetings, where we can properly identify students that need intervention, and now, because we have enough
Right.
Specialists to go around, we can actually schedule them, whereas before, it was, it became sort of a numbers game, because we just didn't have
Right.
The staffing to meet all the needs.
And when do you think, just one more question for you, and then, I have a question for the teachers, when do you think you'll be able to see actual data that says, this investment that we made in 2015, 16, has yielded acts, you know, progress in terms of the testing, or, or whatever?
Well, I mean, on the individual child level, you should see it fairly quickly, because we do do a number of interventions throughout the year. Students that are in this program, instead of doing the Eames Web only twice a year, might be doing it four times a year. So, we're getting additional data points on these students, and hopefully, what we'll see is that the number of students that we traditionally got in second and third grade starts to diminish, because we're catching them in K1.
Right.
So, it'll probably take a couple of years before you start to see that, you know, year two, three, when those levels start to shrink, I think that's when you'll really see that the program is being successful.
Okay.
And the other piece to think about, in the, one of the intents of RTI is that you see less referrals for special education. So, as Dave said, over the next, you know, two to three years, you'd like to think that we're getting students at a younger age, we're able to provide Sorry.
That was a very powerful point.
It was. I was like, the intervention so that we have less students being classified in special education.
We might see that.
Before you ask that question of the teachers, I have a related question to, how closely does this tie, because I know, one of the slides talks about identification of students with learning disabilities, so how does this tie in with the students with other disabilities, for example, emotional or developmental, or does it at all?
It does, because a lot of times, the students we see who are struggling academically, sometimes it is because of learning issues, but other times, it might be related to social issues, emotional issues, you know, family issues even. So, RTI is comprehensive in trying to address all of those needs.
Can I ask a related question before you ask your question?
They know what you're asking, I guess.
I know it's going to take a few years to get those data points, but how, have the regular teachers noticed any difference in the students, in a sense of being, having better self-esteem, or just feeling more successful, and, you know, helping improve their performance probably on a lot of other things, because they're, you know, they're having this?
Well, I think with the smaller ratios, that's huge, so, if the child is in a group of two, they get lots of attention from us, and they feel that success, and they're, they're really, they're able to do more, so, when you compare a group of four kids to a group of two kids, the group of two kids are going to get more accomplished in that 25 minutes than the group of four kids are. So, I think the pace is faster for them, and they're seeing improvements. So, I mean, I think the kids feel, you know, very successful at this time, and I think the teachers appreciate that as well. I don't know if that answered your question.
Well, when they were doing other things in the classroom, did they have, is this program, is this program helping them to have better self-esteem, and feel successful in doing, you know, other activities in the classroom?
I would say so, because they, well, you know, hopefully, what we're doing is, we're building their skills up, so they are more successful with the classroom tasks. So, they are, you know, as far as reading goes, I mean, there's reading in everything, so if their reading is improving, they're going to perform better in math, because they can, you know, they're stronger readers now, where before, maybe they had a hard time with the reading, and that affected the math.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, my question for the teachers is, well, first of all, it's really obvious that you love what you do, you can tell by how you present, and I would say that for our PIG students out there, you know, this is important in life to like what you do, so you just saw an example of people where it's very obvious, and I think that's a great thing to showcase for students, to see that, so, great job there. My second que, my question, though, is, you must have challenges, you're dealing with a challenging job, dealing with the neediest students, so what would you say is your biggest challenge?
I do think someone said earlier that, you know, some of these students we see have issues that are, they have multiple issues, they might, many of the students we see in math also reserve, we see reading services, and sometimes, there are other pieces that we, that are beyond our control, home life situations, or peer relationship issues, and so, sometimes, we have to bring all of those parts together, which can be challenging. And, speaking as a former classroom teacher, a lot of times, you would see huge amounts of growth within the classroom setting, and, and in these, this population, it is oftentimes much slower, and there is a lot of, you know, one step forward, two steps back, so sometimes, that can be discouraging as a teacher, feeling like maybe you're not making a difference, but then, they have these incredible bright moments where you say, they are really getting it. So, you have to have a lot of patience, you have to have a lot of humor, a lot of really TLC for them, some of them just love being there in a small group, and feeling successful in the small group, whereas, sometimes, they don't always feel successful in the general ed classroom. They can be a shining star with us, whereas, they can't always, so, it's, it's very rewarding, too, in, from that aspect, but you have to wear many hats and have a lot of patience.
I just wanted to add one other thing. I think, too, what's been a real challenge, and I think Kyle did a nice job of describing the challenge in terms of the child, and, but, there's also the challenge within the school, and, and we're, our job is to, to work on those foundational skills, and so, oftentimes, you have to, you really have to remind the teacher, and as well as yourself, that, okay, it's okay that we're not doing long division in fourth grade right now, or, you know, because that's not where my student is. So, sometimes, it's really, and we talk about this a lot as a group, about how we really have to look at that child individually, so that's been, it's sort of a personal challenge, as well as one that we struggle, you know, within our school itself, and just, I mean, I know, you know, my principal is very supportive of that, which has been great, but it can be hard, because a lot of the classroom teachers, you know, they've got that pressure to keep that child moving along, and we keep saying, we have to step back, we have to be, we have to meet them where they are, and try to move them forward, so.
On the slide with the pyramid, you have three different tiers, it may be hard to let us know how many students might be in Tier One, but do you have a sense of how many students are receiving services at Tier Two and Three?
Actually, I can give you ballpark numbers on all three tiers, just keep in mind, we have several students that actually do receive services in both ELA and math.
Okay.
So, I'm going to give you sort of a, an average to just make, be able to make sense out of it. So, Tier One, district-wide, we have approximately 300 sessions scheduled, so, that would be 150 students ballpark, but again, that's Tier One. Tier Two, the number's fairly similar, it's about 280 sessions scheduled, so, you know, ballpark 140, 150 students, because, again, many of them are receiving both services. And then, Tier Three, which again, are our neediest students, you're looking at about 75 to 80 district-wide, so, you know, probably 40-ish students. And, you know, of all the, the levels, Tier One is the trickiest, because again, that's the classroom teacher doing some progress monitoring, you know, many times, students are really fluid in there, you know, depending on the, the nature of what the last benchmark assessment was on, especially like something skills-based like math, they may have strong and weak points where they test in and out, so that's a really fluid number, but I wouldn't expect it to grow outside of that, it's going to be a different pool of kids, maybe, from marking period to marking period, if you want to think of it in those terms, quarter to quarter, but in terms of an overall number, that's about right. So, it, I think, overall, if you really look at the kids that we're either pulling out or monitoring within the classroom, we're at ballpark 300 students, which in the past was not near that number, yeah.
And it also sounds like the RTI teachers are helping, are resources for teachers who are doing that tier-level intervention in the classroom, I think from what you've said.
Correct, and that's where having the kits has come in really to be helpful, is it gives the intervention specialists not only structure within their own pullout sessions, but when classroom teachers are looking for resources, the kits themselves have resources that are more intended for aiding the classroom teacher do some additional differentiated instruction as well.
Okay, I have one last question, on Slide Four, where it has the RTI scheduling blocks, the, the time periods are 50-minute sessions, but the pullouts are about 25 to 30, so are they, are you doing two sessions, does that account for preparation time, or? It sounds like where you listed the, the
Yeah, so, basically, what you do is, when you, when you look at the overall, it's more important that you don't look at necessarily the length of time at, at once, so if it's 50 minutes, you might have some students going for the first 25, some going for the second 25.
Okay, so you might be doing two sessions in there, or something, okay, great, thank you.
Correct.
And yeah, I think every building had used this as a framework, but we had flexibility, so, for example, at Hamagrail, we were, we were able to tweak it within five minutes, so we really have an hour for each block, so we have 30 minutes, and we're usually seeing two groups within that hour.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions, how are the students identified to be placed in each tier?
Through assessments, and that then moves through, like, some of these, the Eames Web assessment, for instance, when, when students take that, they're, it's automatically sort of flagged within that system where students should be, but more importantly, we rely very heavily on teacher input, and it goes through Child Study, and when we meet with our data teams, we have the intervention specialists are involved with that, the child psychologists, the building principals, special education, if that's, so, it's, it's a, sort of a team approach, and it's really based on where they fall in the battery of assessments.
Do you look at the ELA, so if they're in the range of two, they might be considered, or it's not necessarily?
Well, again, that really only applies to your fourth and fifth graders, because
Right.
They're the only ones that have taken that, so we, that's also, again, just another data point. That's not something that automatically says yes or no, it's just another data point.
All right, the other question I have for Ms. Meyer, Ms. McCollum, how many students do you usually have, well, what is your caseload, basically, how many students do you see per day or per week?
I have, I have 20, 25 students right now, seven of them are Tier Three, so, those are the more intensive kids that I see, you know, four times a week, and either one-on-one or in a group of two. That's my
Okay, great, thank you.
I have 19 students, and I have five that are Tier Three, and they're upper-grade students, fourth and fifth, so I see them four days a week.
And do you feel like it's a reasonable, that's enough time to work with the students, obviously, you could always use more, but does it seem like it's overwhelming?
Yeah, it seems to be working now, I mean, some of the challenges of the upper-grade kids, especially fifth grade, is that they have so many other, you know, they have DARE, and they have choir, and they have band, and so, they have a lot of other conflicts for our scheduling purposes. So, I think it works out at the, at the fourth and fifth grade level, and then, our younger grades, we're seeing them three times a week for 30 minutes, and that's, seems to be pretty sufficient, as of right now.
All right, great, thanks. And Dave, I have one last question, for, I know gifted students are part of RTI, we don't talk a lot about that, do we have a certain number that?
They're not part of RTI per se, they're part of, sort of, our in, structure, in that we have specialists that offer the challenge program, and some of our challenge teachers are also part of delivering the RTI services.
So, you might have an RTI teacher who's two-thirds
So, they might
RTI, one-third
Challenge, correct.
Okay.
But were you asking how many, is there a cap on the number of students, was that, sorry, I interrupted your
No, I just wanted to see if it was, if the teachers thought it was a reasonable caseload to have, if you're seeing 25 students, is it something that we need to add to, take away from, is?
Any other questions, right? Yes, Mike.
I was just curious, what's the most important thing you think the parents can do to assist you in your efforts?
Mine is easy, just read. Yeah.
I was going to say, really, just spend that time doing the extra work, at least in math, we talk a lot about math facts, and it's not the be-all and the end-all, but it certainly helps you, when you know your math facts, to then do the higher-level computation, and I think problem-solving is a really, really important part in math nowadays, getting kids to really think critically about what is the question asking, and how do we apply this to our real-world situation, and I think you can do
And I think you can do that at every grade level, just have discussions with your kids, you know, make, make up examples from, you know, when you're in the grocery store, we want to buy this number, you know, pounds of this, how will we figure that out? Giving the kids really, this, that math has a meaning in the real world, and just showing them ways that they can think it through. So, there's, and of course, reading for that, too.
Yeah. I would just add to that, just the language of math, that is, sometimes, a lot of kids just have trouble with that, you know, what, what does that mean? What does it mean to when things are joined, when things are, you know, left behind, whatever? So, that, that is, that can be difficult for kids. So, so like Kyle said, just talking to your kids as much as possible with real-life stories, that's what I always, always tell parents at conferences. And place value, for some reason, it seems like most of the kids that come to see us have, the older kids definitely for sure, have had some, for whatever reason, they have not had that foundation in place value. So, that's why they usually end up seeing us. And I just wanted to say one thing about the, the whole block thing, because this is new to us this year, and I, I don't know if I'm speaking on behalf of my colleagues, but we love the block system, and in our building, it, it was so easy for scheduling, and even, we just had our, another meeting in November, like our, what was our eight-week meeting, Heidi? And so, we, I had a bunch of third graders that were in, I had them in two different groups, and then, after the meeting, I, you know, and I added another one in, and I regrouped them based on who, you know, their needs, and who would be, work best together. And because of the block system, it was just easy to do. In the past, it would have been like, oh, my God, to have to reschedule these kids would be a nightmare, but so, we're loving the block system.
And does that exist in all the other schools, too?
All the elementary schools.
I mean, I see Heidi and Diana, but it's...
All the elementary schools, David.
Yes, Diane.
I just have a comment, as Lynn is pushing at me. But asking me what I think of the program, because I'm a special ed teacher, I think it's a phenomenal program, I think you guys are doing a really great job. And I was definitely, like, one last year that really wanted to get more of the RTI teachers on board, so I'm glad it's working so well, so.
I have one more question.
Joanne has one more question.
I have one more.
So, what happens to the kids when they leave the elementary level? What, what do we do with them for supporting them in the middle school?
Yeah, we, we already, we've always had a more formalized AIS program at the middle school. We don't call it RTI there, we call it AIS. But there's basically two levels there, similar to tiers two and three, where some students go sort of on a, more of an everyday basis in a larger chunk of time, and then some would do it during home base, so it might be like a couple of days a week type thing. But so, we have it in both reading and math at the middle school level.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, it was a great presentation, and on behalf of the whole board. And we have eagle pins for you for this evening. Anyone who presents to the board gets an eagle pin.
That donation was huge, that fellow, all that equipment, it was like the worth of their... This is really exciting. It seems to be working really well.
Next, at this time, the board would recognize anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on an agenda item. Is there anyone? Okay, we'll move on. Finance, item number eight, is recommended that the Board of Education approve finance action items A and B.
So, move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries?
We have a donation, isn't that a donation? Or is it something else?
Yes, oh, yeah, I'd like to, to recognize a donation that we received here, from Dr. Richard Jacobs, and donation of woodworking tools and equipment. So, thank you very much. Number nine, professional personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following professional personnel action items A through L.
So, move.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
Just that, that we have a lot of, well, a lot of teachers that have been around a long time, retiring, and just want to thank you, Charles Reed, Tom Straw. Now, I know, but they're...
Ms. Lamora, she taught both my kids, Elsmere.
But anyhow, it's, you know, losing a lot of good people that, you know, have contributed a lot to the district, and really appreciate all they've done over the years. Just want to recognize them, as we will do at the end of the year in June.
Right, we'll have a retirement ceremony at the end of the, the school year. Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? Item number 10, support personnel, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following staff, support staff action items A through G.
So, move.
First and second. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions that item carries? And then, item, other, other action items, is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following action items A through E.
So, move. Second.
That's a first and a second. Any discussion?
I, I have a couple of questions on a couple of these items. On the trip to France, I think I was reading some of the material, and it said, in October, the proposal is to have, in October 2016, host families in this community host students from France, and one of the activities was listed was visiting the school. Do they, they don't attend classes, though, they, I assume they, they have like some kind of drop-in, because they also talked about different kinds of excursions, but did they attend classes, do you know?
They, last time they were here, there was a day that they, that they came here, and they spent the day, and they were paired up with another student, and went to some classes and had lunch and things, yes.
Okay.
But it's not an every day.
Okay. It's not like they're in school every day for the time they're here?
No.
Thank you. And then, on the two pol, two policies that are up for our first reading, the request for religious exemption from immunization, I was wondering, Ms. Monroe, if you know of any immunization that may be exempt, coming down the line, that may be exempt? I thought I've been reading that there may be some particular medical conditions where you may not be eligible for a religious exemption. Is that true, or do you know anything about that?
I, no.
Haven't heard.
No.
Okay.
And that guidance would come from the Health Department, right?
State, the Health Department, through state, yeah.
And then, just feedback for the Policy Committee on the attendance policy. I think there's a section on the attendance policy that talks about incentives. There's a sentence there about incentives, and it just says something, I don't think it says anything, so just to consider the line that says, I don't think we have incentive programs anymore, like you get a, and the sentence that is in there doesn't make any sense, so just revisit the, under the attendance policy, there's an incentives line?
I think we removed that, didn't we?
Oh, you were going to take it out, because the copy that was online had it in there, so.
All right. We'll check it, but we did remove that.
Okay, good. All right. That's it, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstention that item carries? At this time, the board would invite anyone in the audience who would like to address the board on a non-agenda item. Okay? If you could state your name, might have the microphone.
Hi. My name's Raylene Noel, I'm a resident, I live over in Kenneware Avenue. I'm also a French teacher at Burnt Hills Boston Lake Central School. I'm the teacher who invited Jeff Kalamka to participate in the exchange that we do. We've done it for over 20 years, so I just wanted to make myself available if you had any questions further on that. I do appreciate the support of the board. We did do this two years ago, it will be two and a half, it will be three years when the exchange takes place. It's an incredible experience, I can't say enough about it. I've done six exchanges, last time, it was the very best exchange that we had. The Bethlehem students were awesome, as I expected, living in this community, choosing to live in this community. And it's just a wonderful program, so thank you very much for your support.
Okay, great, thanks. Anyone have any questions?
I do. Is this where a Bethlehem student would go to France for two weeks, and then we take French students for two weeks?
That's the way the exchange works in Bethlehem, or in Burnt Hills. In Bethlehem, you've given permission for them to be in France during the vacation week.
Okay.
But, yeah.
All right, great, thank you.
No, thank you.